Good evening, welcome to Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District 13 Board Meeting for Tuesday, June 28, 2016. I'd like to call the meeting into order, and if you would, please rise for the Pledge of Legions.
The Pledge of Legions to apply on the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome again. Columbia Heights Public Schools' mission statement is Columbia Heights Public Schools create worlds of opportunity. Oh, I'm sorry, we've got to do a roll call first. Ted, if you would, do the roll call.
Samurai?
Here.
Lewis?
Here.
Larkin?
Here.
Palmer?
Here.
Landworth?
Here.
Superintendent Kelly?
Here.
Perfect, thank you. Sorry about that. Again, our mission statement, Columbia Heights Public Schools create worlds of opportunity for every learner in partnership with supportive small-town communities by challenging all to discover their talents, unleash their potential, and develop tools for lifelong success. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. Next up is the Agenda Approval Adjustments Announcements and Correspondents. So first would be the approval of the agenda. If I could get a motion to move that forward, please.
No.
We'll give that to Molly. You want the second?
Second.
Second for Laura. Discussion. Hearing none, all's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Announcements, July 4th is Monday, July 4th is the holiday, district offices will be closed. August 9th, which is a Tuesday, will be the primary election. August 16th, Tuesday, 7:00 p.m., regular school board meeting. August 23rd, 7:00 p.m., regular school board meeting. September 5th, it's a Monday, it's Labor Day, the district will be closed. And September 6th, Tuesday, is the first day of school for the students. Under correspondence, Superintendent Kelly, is there any correspondence?
Mr. Chair and members, there's no correspondence at this time.
Thank you very much. Communication to the Board, citizen and employee representatives, at this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to the brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that administration follow-up. The board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time. Do anybody want to address the board? No blue cards? Okay, keep moving forward. The consent agenda, if it includes this, this week includes the personnel report. If I could get a motion to move that forward, please?
No move.
Laura?
Second.
Second by Molly. Discussion.
Mr. Chair, the motion before us that's put forth by the administration is again to approve the, approve the action required for implementation of the items on the consent agenda, and I have not had any opportunity to look into the personnel issues. And again, it's not something that's available to us because of data privacy concerns, which we need to discuss, I believe, as a board. So I'll have to abstain.
Okay, and that'll be obvious when I call for the vote as well. Anybody else have any other discussion on the personnel report or the consent agenda? Hearing none, all's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Abstain.
Member Landworth abstains. Acknowledgements and contributions, this is a resolution, if I could get a motion to move that forward, please?
No move.
Ted?
Second.
Molly, a second. I'll read the resolution, then we can have discussion. Whereas Minnesota Statute 123B.02 permits school boards to receive for the benefits of the district, bequest donations or gifts for any purpose, for any proper purpose, and apply the same to the purpose designated. On that behalf, the board may act as trustee of any trust created for the benefit of the district and for the benefit of pupils thereof. Therefore, be it resolved that by the school board of Columbia Heights Public Schools, Independent School District Number 13, that the school board accepts with appreciation the contributions detailed in the background in the amount of $10,376.53. The detailed background under monetary, a donation of $300 was made to Columbia Academy by Target Take Charge of Education for Student Needs. A donation of $2,300 was made to North Park Elementary by North Park PTA for hockey goals. A donation of $1,440.93 was made to Valley View Elementary by Target Take Charge for Education for Student Needs. A donation of $955.40 was made to North Park by Target Take Charge for Education for Student Needs. A donation of $2,499.75 was made to Columbia Heights High School by Target Take Charge of Education for Student Needs. A donation of $1,150.45 was made to Highland Elementary by Target Take Charge of Education for Student Needs. A donation of $330 was made to Valley View Elementary by Wells Fargo Community Support Campaign for Student Needs. The following donations were made to the Columbia Heights High School Scholarship Program. Renee Janis Johnson, $1,000. Tammy Fisher, $150. Janice and Keith Olson, $50. Value and Kind, donations of coats to Columbia Heights High School by Jeanette Marr for Students in Need, estimated value of $200. Our total fiscal year 2015-2016 monetary contributions to date is $93,000, $93,788.48. Discussion or comments? I will just say that the community continues to be extremely generous, and I, for one, am appreciative of that. This being a resolution, unless, unless there's any other further discussion, we'll do a roll call. For all those in favor, we'll say aye, as opposed to nay. So Ted, if you would, call the roll.
Samurai?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Larkin?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Landworth, aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next up would be reports from members of the board. Board members will report on board activities since the last regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education. Ted, if you'd be willing to go first?
Sure. Had a wonderful time at the Heights Jamboree Parade. The tattoos continue to be a hit with the kids and adults, so it's, it's great to see that, and it's great to see the pride in having the Highlander tattoos and, and the, the units, I think it was what the school district was, was great, and it was great to see all the, all the students and, and all the participants be there, and to honor our Employee of the Year, who we'll honor pretty soon. Also ran in the 5K, put on by the boosters. That was a lot of fun, and I'm glad they're doing that again. I hope they keep doing that. And attended a WMAP, my last, our last as a school district, WMAP Joint Powers Board Meeting, and I'm happy to say WMAP is on firm financial footing, it looks like. They approved the budget, and so we're leaving WMAP in a, in a good position. Hopefully, you know, we'll continue to stay in touch with WMAP. I think they have a lot to offer, to be honest, as a, as a board member and Joint Powers Board Member, and it's more of a market model now, so, so if WMAP has what we need as a school district, perhaps it's something that we can purchase services from them in the future. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Laura?
Well, let me see. I, I missed our, the last work-study session. I was actually over at 916, and we did a board retreat on equity, and that was very interesting, and I hope to have further discussion. It's, we definitely can't be even highlighted in, in two minutes or less, so I'm going to move on. I also attended the parade, which is always a lot of fun. It was too short this year, in my opinion. Usually, it seems like it takes a little bit longer, so I can spend a little more time talking to people, because I do like to talk. I also attended the, the chair meeting prior, and the Employee of the Year celebration out in the, in the district center here, and I think I'm going to, I'm done. Yeah, done.
Thank you. I attended the work session last week, also had the opportunity to participate in the jamboree parade, which was a lot of fun. I went down to the Columbia Heights Library Grand Opening on Saturday afternoon, yes, Saturday. It is a lovely facility, if you haven't seen it, get down there and check it out. Also, had an opportunity to congratulate Mr. Burkus, again, Employee of the Year. That's it for now, thank you.
Thanks. I was at the work session last week, and then on Friday, I was really excited to be in the parade for the first time, with the jamboree parade, handing out Highlander tattoos, and it was wonderful to see people, but like Laura said, I wish it had lasted a little bit longer, because I always felt rushed, I had to keep on going, couldn't stand there and talk to people, but it was so wonderful to see people, and to see the kids, and see everybody, and everyone was so excited to get their tattoos.
Thank you. Just a brief overview of some things that I've been a part of. I also attended the work study last week. As a parent, I was able to attend the trip to Colorado for the All-America City Award Competition, and from the perspective of an observer, it was, it was a phenomenal trip, and hopefully maybe at another time, we can have, you know, further discussion about it, but it was, it was a great trip, and our students, as always, did, did Heights proud. I attended two, actually, and how help me, IFTARs, is that how it's pronounced? I was invited to two different IFTARs, which is a break-in of fast, with two different organizations. I can tell you that I learned a lot within just those two meetings, thinking I already had a handle on things, and realizing that I don't, but was honored to be able to attend both of those. I also was at the library grand opening, and the parade, I was as a firefighter, but we did, had an opportunity, I know member Lewis was able to stop by afterwards, but the parade, I thought, was a success as well, so. And for now, I will conclude my report, and Superintendent Kelly, if you have a report, we'd love to hear it.
Mr. Chair and members, I would like to thank all the members of the All-America City delegation for their really outstanding collaboration in the Denver Award Finals. It was an honor to be a part of that delegation, and it was such an extreme honor when our name was called out as a winner, as a recipient. I want to say a special thanks to Director Alex Jakes and the Dynamics for investing their time, their effort, and their energy, even beyond graduation, into the performances, and they outdid themselves out there. They really were exemplified Heights Pride, and the mayor was absolutely adorable in his kilt. I just have to say that. The Summer Academy, for those of you that have been trying to get in and out in the mornings, realize that Summer Academy is going on in June, and this is actually their last week. I want to just say what a pleasure it is to once again host Summer Academy for all the gifted and talented students that come from multiple districts around the area, and I want to thank all those involved, and I want to thank all of those who have put up with our traffic in the morning and at noon. So that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up, fun stuff. We're going to recognize our Employee of the Year. The board will be presented with information on the Employee of the Year. I believe we have a couple people that are going to speak.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly, it's my honor tonight to be here to present Dwayne Burkus as our 2015-2016 Employee of the Year. He was nominated by seven different individuals, and some of the comments that we received from his staff and other community members included, "He listens and advocates for the staff and students. He speaks to the community daily. Takes time to interact with parents and visitors that come into the building." I heard this a lot. "He's the first to arrive and the last one to leave the building each day. He sits in on conferences with students when parents are not available. He's constantly looking for new ways to improve Columbia Academy." And that is just a couple of the comments about Principal Burkus. A little history about him, he started back in the district in 2002 as an EL teacher at the high school. He went on to become an EL Coordinator, Director of Teaching and Learning, and then last year decided to leave the district center and move down the hill and become the principal at Columbia Academy. So before Dwayne comes up here, one of his nominees, Gabe Glasgow, is going to read her nomination.
Hi, thank you. It is difficult to articulate the positive change Mr. Burkus has created at Columbia Academy since becoming our principal. This is partly because much of the change is in the climate, the feel of the building, the collective morale. It's also due in part to the fact that many of the positive changes are small incremental steps toward a very large and very important goal, to create and maintain a culture of academics at Columbia Academy. And I believe it is also Mr. Burkus's humble nature. Don't let his modesty fool you. He is quick to deflect any compliments back on the CA staff and students, but it is in large part due to him that we have successes to celebrate. I really cannot speak highly enough of Mr. Burkus. His dedication, strong work ethic, enthusiastic Heights Pride, positive and thorough leadership, and kind, respectful nature are beyond words, and I'm certain to fail at the task tonight, but I'm going to try anyway. Mr. Burkus's presence is always felt in the building. He is everywhere. He is out in the hallways handling behavior issues, and he is meeting with parents. He is observing classrooms, and he is meeting with teachers and staff, community members, and stakeholders. Mr. Burkus's pride in his students is shown time and time again. He knows almost every student by name and greets them daily. He gives everyone respect and a listening ear. He attends all the CA events, often found cheering along the sidelines. He was at every production of The Lion King Jr., every sporting event, every band and choir concert, every robotics competition, and every art showcase. He makes all school announcements congratulating every win for every sports team and academic group. He mentored some of our most challenging students throughout the school year. He brings out the best in students by acknowledging their strengths and fostering growth and leadership. His positivity for the school communicates that he is proud to work in Heights and proud to work at Columbia Academy. He encourages students to be true to themselves and be proud of their cultural, ethnic, and linguistic heritage, while fostering a sense of strength in our community that is so rich in these diversities. He can often be seen around the building helping students to open lockers and find their classrooms, helping with uniform needs, conferencing with students, answering the front office window, covering for classes, monitoring halls and the lunchroom, picking up trash, painting the office, framing student work, and congratulating individuals for jobs well done. No task is too small for Mr. Burkus. Mr. Burkus's dedication is infectious. He is there well before school begins, and he is there long after the school day has ended, and sometimes, he is there on the weekends. It is clear that he is constantly striving to do better in every aspect of running our school, from accelerating student achievement to boosting staff morale. He is the most dedicated leader I have ever had. Because Mr. Burkus does not let up in his hard work and dedication to create a culture of academics at CA, teachers are inspired to do the same. He has an incredible ability to keep a pulse on the teachers and to utilize each of their strengths. Because of this, teachers are able to grow and take risks in a safe environment, and we have a more evenly distributed leadership. He is kind, respectful, thorough, and firm in his decision-making. He is not afraid to have difficult discussions or make a difficult decision if it means bettering our students and teachers. He allows and encourages staff to have a healthy work-personal-life balance. He provides constructive feedback to allow for genuine growth. Mr. Burkus maintains a cool composure and a positive but realistic outlook at all times. Mr. Burkus's choice to step down as the Director of Teaching and Learning in Columbia Heights to become the principal of Columbia Academy speaks volumes about his dedication and commitment to our school and to our district. We know he did it for no other reason than the fact that he truly cares about our students and wants to make our building better. We know that he cares deeply about Columbia Academy, because he shows it in everything he does.
That's awesome. I don't think I should say anything. I'll just ruin it all, but I, well, thank you. Yeah, I, I want to thank, I think what I'd like to do is thank, and really thank a lot of very strong women that have made me be able to continue working here and enjoy my time here, and that starts with my wife, Laura. What's up? Me, day in and day out. It includes all of our directors and coordinators who've worked so closely with me, but I think especially of those in teaching and learning, and Xena, and Wendy, my secretary for many years. For community members, like Ms. Student who's here, Joanne, thank you. I remember one day, a very bad day, I had one more message to listen to, and I didn't want to pick up the phone to listen to it, I figured it had to be more bad news. It was Joanne saying, "Just calling to tell you, hang in there, whatever's going on, I'm sure you'll be fine." I never will forget that. Joanne, thank you. To Sarah, who is my secretary now, and Employee of the Year, who, who keeps me going on a day-to-day basis, and then, of course, the team who is at Columbia Academy, all of those dedicated teachers that are there. We have many, many dedicated people in our district. I feel honored to work with them. I feel honored to be part of the district. And want to thank, lastly, then Superintendent Kelly, who has allowed me to do that, allowed me to take on different roles here, and work for that mission statement through all those years, to create worlds of opportunities for every learner. And I know that's what gets us all out of bed and gets us going every day, and proud to be part of that, but thank you very much, appreciate it. Thank you. Anybody have any comments for Dwayne? I just have one thing to say, Dwayne. Hey, that was very eloquently written, that was phenomenal, but I can up you by one. When I got an eighth-grade daughter that comes home and tells me of the three years that she spent at Columbia Academy, this year, the culture and the climate was so different, and actually crediting Mr. Burkus for that. So that's how I knew things were, how things were going this year, is when, and I won't go in too much detail, but she doesn't, she's not one, for her to have that insight and actually recognize where it's at. So congratulations. It doesn't surprise me, Dwayne, that you're doing the job that you're doing, but from a staff to say that, and then to hear it, at least with one particular student, that, you know, things are changing down there, and it's, it's for a positive, in a positive direction, so keep up the good work. Thank you. Yeah, Ted?
I'd just like to say that, you know, for, for you to move down the hill speaks volumes from here to there and to take on the principal role, and I was on the, fortunate to be on the team to help select the next principal. I think we made an excellent choice. It was not even close, so.
Okay. Superintendent Kelly?
Well, I have to say just a few words, Dwayne, so. I, Dwayne is doing an exceptional job as a principal at Columbia Academy, and I knew, and the team knew that he would, but he has been a bright star in our universe since he arrived here as a teacher at the high school. He's, to me, he could win this award every year, and I think there's been some years where he has declined the nomination. He came in as an enthusiastic EL teacher, and I was just reminiscing with his wife outside that I knew I had somebody that really was a live wire when he knocked on Teaching and Learning's door and said, "Say, I'd like to do a communication piece to the parents in EL. Who do I speak to about that?" And he, he has a tremendous gift, not only for oral communication, but for written communication. He, you're exactly right, Gabe, when you're saying he is the humblest man I know, and always deflects all the credit to somebody else, but I want to say tonight that sometimes you just hire really good people and get out of their way, and you are one of those people, and I'm so glad you're in this family, and I hope to work with you for many more years, and when I retire, I hope to be watching your career, because it's stellar now, and it has only more accolades to follow, I am sure. So thank you for your work for this district, for our students, for our staff, and for our community.
Get a copy of that tape. She said something about, let's just get out of her way or whatever. That's going to be, that's recorded. We got that on tape, right? Okay, we got it covered, so. Anybody else?
Just a big thank you, Mr. Burkus. As a parent down there, too, of two different students in very different worlds, I see the relationships that you have with the kids, and that speaks volumes to you. I think that when you said, you know, he knows everyone's name, it's, when I've walked in in the mornings, you're out there. Your presence is felt, the teachers can feel it, the parents can feel it, and the students definitely can, so thank you.
Okay, great. This is an awkward moment where everybody says, now, do I have to really stay for the rest of the meeting? And the answer is, unless you're on the agenda, no, you do not. So this would be a perfect opportunity to sneak out if you wanted to, so. Thanks again, Dwayne. Thanks, everybody, for taking time off of your summer to come in and recognize, Dwayne, that's awesome. And while they're doing that, looks like next up is a Senate Resolution on Advanced Placement Small District of the Year, and I believe Senator Goodwin is going to come up and talk about that.
Welcome.
Do we have the resolution here? Right there. Oh, boy.
We even got it framed, Barb.
It looks wonderful. Well, I couldn't pass up the opportunity to thank you all for the work that you're doing here in recognition of the Advanced Placement Small District of the Year Award. I came to the celebration, and I have to say, it was just absolutely wonderful celebration. I was so proud of the choir that, and that I taped it, and I went back to the Senate and made everybody listen, who would possibly take a few minutes to do that. And I also, I mean, I think, you know, some people have different opinions of Columbia Heights, or used to at any rate, and I'm very pleased that we have such wonderful local leaders here that have done such a good job in turning the city around and making sure that we accept everybody and that we do the best we can with our kids here, and I'm just very proud that it represents six school districts, but I am a resident of Columbia Heights, and of course, I was on the school board for a short time myself, but I couldn't miss the opportunity to do a resolution for you all, just to congratulate you for your fine work here. So I want to read that to you now. Whereas advanced placement can save students college tuition when they earn college credit while still in high school, and whereas from 2013 to 2015, Columbia Heights Public Schools increased student participation in AP by 26% annually, and the percentage of students scoring a three or higher on at least one AP exam by 6% annually. And whereas the schools also increased the percentage of traditionally underrepresented minority AP students earning a three or higher on at least one AP exam by 62% annually, an increase of 30 students since 2013. And whereas 48% of all AP students scored a three or higher in 2015, and whereas the first classes at Columbia Heights were held in 2000 with 50 students, now 290 are enrolled, and thousands of staff and students have participated. And whereas the district has dramatically increased both the number of students taking AP courses and tests 52% in two years, and for the percentage of students scoring well on the AP exams. And whereas Columbia Heights was the only school with nearly 50% enrollment of American Indian, African-American, or Latino students among new AP students, and whereas clearly the rich curriculum and excellent educators at Columbia Heights Public Schools are doing great things for their students. And whereas on April 6, 2016, a wonderful ceremony was held at Columbia Heights High School in celebration of their recent honor, being named Advanced Placement Small District of the Year, with a place on the National College Board's District Honor Roll. And now therefore, be it resolved by the Senate of the state of Minnesota that it congratulates the students, teachers, and staff of Columbia Heights High School on being named Advanced Placement Small District of the Year. Be it further resolved that the Secretary of the Senate is directed to prepare an enrolled copy of this resolution to be authenticated by the Secretary's signature and that of the Chair of the Senate Rules and Administration Committee, and transmit it to the principal of Columbia Heights High School, signed by Joanne M. Zoff, Secretary of the Senate, Thomas Bach, Chair and Majority Leader of the Senate, Chair of Rules and Administration, and Barb Goodwin, State Senator. Thank you all very much. And now, of course, we've got the city honors as well, so it's just very exciting, and I'm sure that all the residents of Columbia Heights appreciate all the work that you all have done to make these things possible, so really appreciate your work.
Thank you, Barb. That's very nice that you did that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I did, I thought it might be nice if, I was trying to say, if perhaps Senator Goodwin could, could give this to you, so that we can have a picture of what's going on with this, because this is a pretty big deal.
Well, she gives it to you, and get a picture.
No, I think it would be fine for you.
That's fine, whatever.
Very good.
How about both of you?
This will be fine, Cheryl will be fine.
This will be fine, Cheryl will be fine.
Barb, take all the credit for the, probably.
Yeah.
All right, yes, Barb.
It'll be great.
I just want to thank you so much for making the effort to make the resolution.
Thank you and for, I think everybody knows, but this is my last year in the Senate and I am not done yet, I'm done with session, but my last day will be January 3rd and I just want to add to that by saying, um, I really enjoyed representing the city and the school district and the whole Senate district. It's just time for me to probably learn how to relax and travel a little and have a good time, so, um, but I really do appreciate, I watch what's going on here and I'm just very impressed, very impressed. So, thank you all for your work.
Thank you.
Hats off to Senator Goodwin, too.
Yes.
I just want to thank, thank you for your role and of course, what we do here is, is really impacted by what happens at the state, so thank you for advocating for us in the state.
Very proud to do so, thank you.
A round of applause for Barb, too.
I think we should, Kelly. Thank you, Barb. Uh, next up is the Communications Plan 2015-2016. Uh, we'll receive an update on that plan from Casey.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly, good evening. I'm reporting out on the second year of the four-year 2014-2018 Comprehensive Communications Plan. And as always, we start out our, excuse me, our presentations with our mission statement of creating worlds of opportunity for every learner. We also talk about our core values and how they tie into what we're doing. And as it relates to the Communications Plan, each of our core values aligns. When we talk about community, it's keeping all of our communities internally and externally accurately informed so that we can gain their support. Excellence, demanding nothing less is what we, what we strive for. Collaboration, we need to do this internally and externally to keep our communications strong. Integrity, we work hard to make sure that all of our communications are factual, transparent and credible. Respect, we do this in honoring all in our district through our communications. Courage, we do what we need to do for all of our students. And innovation, looking for new inexpensive ways so that we can broaden our communications. As we tie into our strategic roadmap, we are Direction F of telling our story, brand development, reputation management to increase partnership and enrollment. And a little background, especially for our newer members, Communications Department was reestablished in July 1st of 2013. This was after 10 years that the district did not have a Communications Department. Through Superintendent Kelly's leadership, one of the first things that we did was we contacted the National School Public Relations Association to perform a communications audit. The purpose behind that was to make sure that we have an objective outside viewpoint that helps guide us as we develop a Communications Plan. And we created that Communications Plan based on that audit and we decided to do it for four years and we presented it to the school board on June 10th, 2014, and we activated it on July 1st of 2014. Within the Communication Plan, and you all should have gotten that beforehand and it is also on the, on the district's website, we have what we call nine action items and those that are in bold are, well, they're all in bold now because we're in the second year, but you'll see how we started out, the first year introducing, uh, the first three, you did not see anything on the fourth because we introduced that this year. And then with each following year, we go from introducing to focus and maintaining. And I will get into these a little bit more, uh, as we go through the presentation. So, year one, when we reported out, we had seven recommendations and out of that, we reported out on 35 strategies and 120 tactics. This year, we are still reporting out on the seven recommendations, but we moved up to 40 strategies and 142 tactics. So, we moved up two strategies plus 22 tactics that we're working on this year. An important point to, as I'm going through this, is to define what these descriptors are. So, when I talk about achieved, that means the strategy has been accomplished. Ongoing, the strategy or tactic is accomplished, but they continue as normal operations. In progress, the process for the strategy or tactic has begun. Um, we, uh, we do not have any modifieds and the not developed is the strategy, strategic or tactic process has yet to be started. And lastly, suspended, we removed it as an action item. So, as we go through each of these, the first recommendation is implement a strategic communication program that reflects best practices in school public relations. We have five strategies, 23 tactics, and of these, we've achieved 10. We have 10 that are ongoing and three that are not developed. And I will clarify, um, the not develops later. The second recommendation is expand, expand a culture of communication. Within this, we have six strategies, 17 tactics. We've achieved three, we have six that are ongoing and we have eight that are in progress. Third recommendation is to expand the outreach to parents in our community. We have 11 strategies, 44 tactics, of this, we've achieved four. We have 22 that are ongoing, seven that are in progress, six that we have yet to develop and we suspended five. The fourth recommendation is create a crisis communicate, communications plan based on best practice. I need to clarify that this is not a district crisis plan, it is a communication plan that supplements, that complements the district crisis plan. And from that, we have three strategies and 14 tactics. We've achieved three of those, we have nine that are ongoing and two that are in progress. Recommendation five, we continue to integrate social media into the communications program. We have two strategies, 10 tactics, of this, we've achieved three, four are ongoing and three are in progress. The sixth recommendation is to expand the use of video as a communication tool. We have two strategies and eight tactics, three of these are ongoing, two are in progress and three are to be developed. Seventh recommendation is to continue to refresh the district website. We have seven strategies, 14 tactics, achieved seven, three ongoing, one in progress and three to be developed. The eighth recommendation is develop a marketing plan and incorporate effective marketing branding strategies into communication planning. Two strategies, eight tactics, six are ongoing, one in progress and one to be developed. And the ninth recommendation is exploring additional paths to engaging diverse populations. Two strategies and four tactics and two of those are ongoing and two of them are in So, when we take all these together for the second year results of where we are with the Communications Plan, we had 142 tactics, we've achieved 30, up seven from the previous year. We have 65 that are ongoing, that's up 16. We have 26 in progress, up eight. We have 16 that are not developed, so we've shaved eight off and we suspended five. And as a form of recognition, also, I wanted to share that I handed out to you more detailed information, some of our quantitative tracking, that it's just too much to go into right now, but it's there for you and I'll also have that online. But one of the other things that we would like to share is that the hard work is paying off, we have been recognized, the school district has been recognized at both the state and the national level with awards. And just this last week, uh, we were notified that Columbia Heights Public Schools has been awarded, uh, three more national, um, awards. The Award of Merit for the Heightsy News, Award of Merit for Preparing for College and Careers Checklist, which we worked very closely with the Teaching and Learning Team to develop. And for this group here, we got an honorable mention for our school board report and we were the only school district in the nation that was recognized for having a school board report for reporting out. So, questions?
Were these strategies and tactics, did they come from the National Public Relations or, or how did you develop them?
The, the question, the, all the strategies, the recommendations, the tactics, all came, every single one came directly from the communications audit. Ensebra normally suggests that you go in and you pick and choose because there's so many, but Superintendent Kelly and I felt that why should we pick and choose? Let's just go at it all. And it's, it's a, it's a lot of work, uh, it's a lot of work, but as you can see, we're picking it off and we are definitely moving forward.
You want?
I just want to say, I'm, I'm so glad, I mean, there's a lot of progress that's been made. I mean, what, what a difference it's made. I, to, to, I love the communications report and I don't know if the, the new members have received the actual audit. Um, that may, that may be interesting to, to, if you, if you want to take a, a look at that.
Okay.
Because it, it actually outlines all of the different, all the, everything that we saw on there, the ongoing and stuff, so you can actually see and track what we've actually managed to accomplish or what, what you've actually managed to accomplish, I'm using the royal we, I guess. So, um, yeah, it looks, it looks really good. I don't have any questions.
Thank you.
Just one comment, I think that, um, you know, highlighting the college and career-ready checklist thing, um, that you put a lot of work into. I think that's one of the best projects that's come out of this and thank you, the parents are definitely appreciative and the students are benefiting from that, so thank you for your hard work.
I'll pass it on to TNL team as well.
Perfect, thank you.
I just want to say that, uh, having gone to national school board conferences and seeing what is, is known as best practices and, and excellence in, in school communications, I see that here and it's really heartening to see that, um, something that we, the school district, I, I feel has needed for a long time, so it's heartening to see this and I think we're, it looks like we are leading the way and thank you for that.
Yeah, I'd like to second that. I really appreciate me, you know, you making the effort and going through all of the recommendations. It's always better to overshoot than undershoot, so that's, that's wonderful. I had a couple of questions. One of them, what's the difference between ongoing and in progress?
Ongoing is the strategy or tactic is accomplished, but they continue as normal operations. So, for instance, the website, refreshing the website, we accomplished that, but it's an ongoing, uh, prog, uh, it's ongoing. In progress means that we just started within, within a certain period, um, but the process has started. We're, we're, we're not at the point where we can say it's ongoing yet. And I'm glad that you just brought that up because, uh, as it relates to the website example, uh, we will be bringing up a new website this summer, oh, we're going to start trans, transferring all of our data and such, hopefully by July 1st and you're going to see a whole new website. I'm sorry, you had another question?
Yeah, and the other one was, I don't remember what the classification was, not developed or something like that.
Achieved, ongoing, in progress, not developed and suspended.
Oh, yeah, so this is, not developed was, it hasn't happened yet, right? And then suspended, you decided to abandon that? Or it didn't work or, sometimes things don't work.
It, yes, Superintendent and I talked about it and it just was, we just determined that it was not feasible at this point in time. So, but, uh, on the whole, we're doing well.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
On more than one occasion, Casey, and I've shared this with you multiple times, but we'll do it publicly, that there's been a noticeable difference since the Communication Department was reestablished and, and the effort that's been put into it by you and your team, um, I hear people talking about it, you know? Even when they squawk about, boy, it'd be nice to have this or that, you know they're talking about it, that means you're doing something right, you're creating things that are generating conversations out there, but, um, I, I think that, um, it's, it's, it's made a world of difference in helping to get the word out that, I guess, help get the, the real image of what's going on in our district out there, um, so people have to, are, are, have an opportunity to, to see the things that are going on in our district. So, I just, I was really pleased with, um, the things that you guys are turning out in the Communications Department, so thank you for your hard work.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Casey. Okay, next up will be board policies of first reading. The policies for first reading are 506 student discipline, 506 student discipline form, 509 enrollment of non-resident students, 515 form, 516 student medication, 522 student sex nondiscrimination, 524 technology and internet acceptable use and safety policy. These policies will appear on a future agenda for approval. Any questions on that?
Are these just law changes that we're basically incorporating or is there new material besides that in the policies?
I believe almost all of the changes that I, just guarantee a hundred percent, but the changes that were made with that were, it was statute changes, additions, deletions, some of it was MSBA wording changes as far as we versus he and one of them, I don't remember which one it was, but it was, they changed the, the, to cover all students differently, the one under the, was it the one under the, the nondiscrimination one, there was, there were several word changes to meet all students as opposed to, it wasn't just, you know, you know, like, when you talk about sex, age, you know, the discrimination of these different ones, it was, it was made more inclusive, so.
Okay.
So, but yeah, but there was recommendations of MSBA or law changes that were, that took place.
Director Hollis is here tonight, did you, would you concur? Do you have anything to add?
I can bring the mic over. Sorry. Don, Mrs. Hoyen, Stanford. Uh, yes, that's correct. All of the changes, and we had quite a stack of them, were all statutory changes.
Thank you, that helps a lot.
Okay. Any else? Next up, end of year K-12 activities plans. Mr. Miller, welcome.
Good evening, Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. I am going to give you a spring update on our activities and athletics. So, our mission here, uh, we've heard it tonight, but our mission here at Columbia Heights Public Schools is to create worlds of opportunity for every learner. And then our core values, we have, um, uh, many to pick from, but tonight, I'm going to focus on collaboration, um, especially here on the spring update. I was out on paternity leave for about five weeks and there was a lot of collaboration in, down in my office to make sure things were being taken care of, so tonight, I'm going to focus on collaboration with my team and the high school administration. And before I start here, I'm really going to emphasize our activities department. Last time I spoke, we are increasing participation in our activities and it really showed this spring. So, I'm going to start off with Grease. We had Spotlight Awards and what Spotlight Awards are, it's equivalent, equivalent to an all-state athletic award, so it's a pretty big deal to, to get, uh, this, these awards. So, our, the first five is for the entire cast for Grease. Uh, I'll start off with four honorable mention, uh, for overall performance, ensemble performance, acting by ensemble and overall technical team. So, we got an honorable mention award for those and then community engagement. And then community engagement award, the entire cast was given. Again, we had some individual awards for Grease. We got a technical leadership by Jack Chavez Mendez. Evaluator shout-out, Justin Larkin received. And then another evaluator shout-out by Ken Pang. So, Grease did a great job this spring because this is my third slide, and we're still going here. So, outstanding in lead role, Jesse Mickelson. And then we received a bunch of honorable mentions for leading role, Lizzie Lentz, another leading role, Maddie Gilbertson. Supporting roles, Amanda Meyer, Elijah Vanderpool, and Crystal Delush. Okay, and I had to add, I have to highlight on our choir. This spring, we had a chance to travel to Chicago. I had the, the honor to attend that trip with our students, so we had a really enjoyable time there. So, this is our choir in Chicago. Another picture of our choir. After we performed, everybody was exhausted, but all smiles on their face, at least most of everybody had a smile on their face. I did take a picture from Casey of the Denver Dynamics Choir, and nothing but good things about our, our students. I know our city got the award, but I love to hear people brag about our students here at Columbia Heights Public Schools. So, I was extremely pleased that our city got the award, but we had a chance to send our students to perform, our top students to perform, and have the nation see our, our Moving on to spring athletics, our boys tennis team participated in the state tournament for the first time, and Columbia Heights recorded history. So, there's a difference between individuals going to state and then team for, for tennis, for the sport of tennis. But our team made it to the state, so that was a really big deal for our tennis program. And then this is the team here. We were section 5A champions, and that picture was taken at Spring Lake Park High School. Another picture of a couple of our guys just holding the trophy. Another exciting thing for me to see is the blue around the neck of, of our athletes. We're starting to see more of that. So, that excites everybody to see that blue, the color blue, which means first place. We also, so I said, I stated we're section 5A champions. I also, we also got bragging rights at the Tri-Metro meetings because we're Tri-Metro champions. And then also another big highlight, this spring was our lacrosse program, had four victories. That doesn't seem like a lot, but it's the most ever in the history of Columbia Heights lacrosse. So, we've had that roughly for about 10 years, and we saw some success this year just with collaborative effort with new coaches and camaraderie with the team. So, fall 2016, we have a couple registration days. August 3rd is our first one. All practices begin August 15th, and then CI-adapted soccer begins the first week of Any questions for me?
Any questions?
Excellent.
Thanks.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, next up will be a closed session. In accordance with Minnesota Statute 13D.03, the board will meet in closed session for the item on the agenda for the purpose of discussing negotiation strategy. We'll be going into closed session. No back in session, it is, okay, I'm going to tell that, 8:16. So, we are on to our, returning to open session, we're on to our action items, and first up will be the Minnesota State High School League membership. Mr. Miller, one more time.
Hello again, Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. I am here tonight to ask for a resolution on the renewal of the Minnesota State High School League membership. This happens every year. We have to renew our membership with the State High School League. And what this means is we participate in all the activities and athletics that the State High School League provides.
You can just approve it if you'd like.
Does anybody have any questions regarding the renewal of the membership?
No move.
What's that?
No move.
Okay, motion, move forward, could I get a second?
Second.
Molly, any discussion?
Is there really any other alternative?
No.
Thank you for clarifying.
If there's no other discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Do you want to lose a resolution?
Do I need to read this as a resolution?
No, but you can, but you have to have people do a roll call vote.
Oh, do we roll call it?
If people want to read the.
Because it's the, okay.
If people want to read the resolution on their own, that would be fine, and then you could do a roll call.
This is our resolution. Read the, waive the reading of the resolution. Is everybody comfortable with that?
I'll second that.
Okay. So, waive the reading, and then, so it is a roll call. I apologize. Ted, if you would, please read the roll.
Samurai?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Larkin?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Lanmer, aye.
Kind of changed gears on you there. That was my bad. It was, it's set up as a resolution, so we have a resolution that's approving the membership for the Minnesota State High School League, so, and it has passed. So, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is the Northeast Metro 916 Long-Term Facility Maintenance Levy Allocation.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. Tonight I bring, bring to you the long-term facility maintenance revenue. As we talked last, last meeting, this is a change from MDE. It's taking all of our health and safety and rolling it into a long-term maintenance, and taking all the deferred revenue and rolling it in together. So, when we say, for, when we talk about 916, it's their health and safety program that's now in the long-term maintenance revenue. The amounts that I put in your packet, this is what District 916 is looking at levying for this next calendar year, so it goes on to our, our paid 2017 taxes, and the amount of $15,685. And this is actually, almost the exact same amount as they did last year. So, it's not, this is not a big change to our levy, it's just a different label and the same amount. So, I'm just looking for authority to go ahead and include this in our levy, and you'll see that there's a resolution from 916 in your packet.
Motion, move that forward. Ted, looking for a second.
Second.
Hala? There's a resolution.
I move that we waive the reading of the resolution.
Motion to move the reading of the resolution.
I'll second that.
Second. Do we need a vote on that, Ted, then?
We should.
Okay. There's a motion on the table to waive the reading, a second. I don't need a discussion. Hearing none, all's in favor of waiving the reading of the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Now, for approval of that resolution, Ted, if you would, please.
I just have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is this, I, just to comment, just for the public, that, that because we're members of the 916 Collaborative, that's why they're, they don't have the ability to levy on their own, that's why we have to levy as well as every other member district of 916?
Yeah, District 916 has, you know, buildings just like we do, and when it comes to health and safety projects or deferred revenue projects, they cannot levy like we can. So, we pay a small portion of theirs, and we share it together with all the other member districts.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, roll call to approve the resolution.
A Samurai?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Larkin?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Lanmer, aye.
Okay, motion curious.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. The Every Student Succeeds Act, the grants, the board will be asked to approve the ESSA grant for 2016, 2017.
Chair Larkin, Superintendent Kelly, members of the board. I'm here this evening seeking approval of the preliminary budgets for the Every Student Succeeds Act. That includes Title I, Title II, and Title III. Just as a reminder, I presented these preliminary budgets at our last school board meeting. Now, these are federal, federal funds that Columbia Heights Public Schools qualifies for and annually needs to submit an application with a narrative and a budget along with, and then work with the auditors who provide supervision over the programs and the implementation on an annual basis. These funds go to support continuous improvement, additional interventions in literacy math in addition to professional development, and support for English learners. So, again, I'm here seeking approval for the preliminary budgets that were presented to you. In the, the actual budgets will come out in October, and I will come back and present those to you as well. But this is necessary in order to plan and prepare those budgets for the upcoming school year.
Motion to move that forward.
No move.
Molly, second by Ted. Discussion.
And how was this preliminary budget put together?
So, based on the allowable expenses for each of the different title grants, and what, also looking at past practices and what has been approved in our, in our work with the Department of Education.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion curious.
Thanks, Ian.
Thank you.
Next up is the Twin Cities North Chamber of Commerce membership, and we got Bill back one more time.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. Tonight I bring to you membership for the Twin Cities North Chamber of Commerce. We've been members of this group for many years. I think it's a good opportunity for the school district to be able to communicate with the business members of what's happening with the, what's going on at this school, and to be a supportive member of that group. And you see that there was a relatively large increase from one year to the, to the next. It sounds like they changed their pricing model, and they had quite a few more tiers, and they kind of consolidated, so that's kind of why we got the increase. You see that there is a hundred and, over $150 increase, so it's up to you if you want to keep their, keep membership in the, in the chamber, but from my point of view, I think it's a good idea.
Motion, move that forward, please.
No move.
Laura?
I'll second.
Second by Ted. Discussion.
Does the chamber still put on breakfast for the new teachers?
Yes, they do. On the, on the last day of the new teacher.
I didn't hear the question, I'm sorry.
Oh, I asked if the, the chamber puts on, still puts on breakfast for the new teachers, a welcoming breakfast.
Yeah, on, on the last day of the new teacher workshop week, they do a breakfast that morning for our new teachers. Our, actually, it's all our new staff members.
Can you talk a little bit about change in their tiers and stuff? Do they give a specific reason why?
No, I think it just, the, the leadership has changed, and then I guess, you know, have little, little different ideas on how they're going to put the dudes out. I don't have, I don't have a specific reason why they did that.
Do you still think the value is there for us even with the increase?
I do.
Okay. Any other questions?
What are some, can you just explain a little bit, what are the values that we receive or the benefits from the chamber?
Well, I think one of the main values that we receive from the chamber is that, is that direct dialogue with members of our business community. I mean, I'm at every single meeting or every single event that they, they have, but the, I have very, very, I think, very productive discussions with business members when we're there, when they, when they find out I work for the school district, they ask very specific questions on what we're doing and why we're doing them. And I think it's really a nice communication piece of us being able to talk to those businesses to explain what's happening here in the school district.
Anyone else? Hearing no further discussion, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
Next up is board topics. Anyone have anything for board topics?
There's a couple of things that was brought up during the reports that, thank you for reminding me.
I was writing them down.
I was also at the work study and, and the library grand opening, and I also want to report, I forgot, WMEP did some accounting, they got a new finance organization, business manager, and they found actually there was a reimbursement that's due to the member districts for transportation costs. So, Columbia Heights should be getting a reimbursement for, from transportation.
Cool.
They also have a quest, some questions from community, community members about the funding for the trip to Denver for the All-America City. I understand that the city spent money on that. I was wondering if the school district spent money supporting that, and if so, how much? What was it spent on, and who was it spent on? I think in the interest of openness and transparency, it would be good to, to have that information.
Are you looking for specific answers right now?
If you have them, great. If not.
We don't, but I will be, we'll provide them in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Any other board topics?
I guess I just want to thank the WMEP board publicly. You know, it's been great working with them, and it's, it's, it's a great collaborative. So, anyway, I won't miss them.
Any other board topics? Hearing none, we will adjourn this meeting at 8:28.